And good evening. The September 8, 2022 Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, the prayer and pledge will be led by Reverend Evan Dolleve, Executive Director of the Greater Longview United Way. They are launching their 75th anniversary campaign with a mission to improve the education, financial stability, and health of every person in our community. They're able to do this by raising funds that are granted to local partners, agencies, for programs that meet these needs. Please rise. Dr. Dolleve.
Please join me in prayer. In the stillness of this moment, speak to us, O God. We are thankful that Longview is a diverse and vibrant city that brings together the blending of different cultures, races, religious expressions, belief systems, and languages. All of these parts coalesce into a beautiful picture, and that is a reflection of you, O God, our Maker. Guide all of those in branches of government and public service to place the welfare of all above political action groups, reelection campaigns, and partisan politics. Help us to rid our minds of artificial labels that divide us. Help us to tear down walls that needlessly separate us and build bridges of unity, trust, mercy, and grace. O divine Maker, the challenges that lie before us are not Republican or Democrat issues, or issues that just affect one district or another. Rather, they are moral issues that speak to the way that your followers understand you, your teachings, your commands, and the call upon their lives. May we not lose sight of who we are created to be. May we not lose sight of the fact that all people, whether Lobo, pirate, or panther, whether documented or undocumented, whether citizen or refugee, whether well housed or homeless, whether fed or hungry, are all created in your holy and divine image. May we find courage, and strength, and guidance to complete the task that lay ahead. Grant this for the sake of your righteous name. Give success to the work of our hands through Jesus the Christ, the Holy One of God, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Will you join me now in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We read a citizen comment. I do have one speaker card. Ms. Brenda Woolridge.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Woolridge. My address is 2217 South 13th Street, and I'm here again on behalf of the district city and our community. And on the last meeting that I came to, and our mayor and others spoke and said that they were going to do everything they could to get us some help in the last visit. So I'm hearing that we will not be getting the, I'm talking about the code enforcement. We need that so bad on the south side of town. We have new people coming in. We've also, I've also saw some gang-looking people, and we need code enforcement because we're getting a lot of torn houses, houses that are just messed up, and some people don't care. Well, I'm not one of those people. And the people in my neighborhood are not those people. And I'm here this evening trying to figure out why, side side of Longview, Texas, when he said, "All nations in liberty and justice for all," I hadn't seen a lot of that here lately. And I'm speaking on behalf of south side of Longview. The things that we've asked for, we have not received. We come in any way that, you know, that we were told to come and petition, but we still haven't received it. And so I just want to know why South Longview is not recognized as a part of Longview, Texas. Because it was here before every other part of the town was here. Just because it's old does not mean that everybody in that neighborhood does not want care. Everybody in that neighborhood just want a decent living, a decent place to live. And one of the ways is to have code enforcement, enforce the rules that are already written down in the book. And I would greatly appreciate some answers to that, whoever I need to talk to, or what, you know, we don't get the help, you know. I just don't understand that. And another thing, I was going through my neighborhood the other day, and I saw a police, and first, let me stop here. I am proud to say that I am a member of Longview, Texas. We have an awesome police organization. They are awesome people, and I'm proud to know that they considered our city. But I was going through my neighborhood, and I saw a police car back up in a corner, and I saw another one on the next street was backed up in a corner, and I stopped and asked him. I said, "Are we having any problems? Is there any issue going on?" He said, "No, ma'am, we're just patrolling." I said, "Okay." But I never saw anyone patrolling. I thought you had to move when you patrol. And so that didn't go, you know, what I was told. But I don't know the rules and regulations of how they do that. But I never did. I'd come through there two or three times, and they were in the same place. And then I found out that they were looking for a particular person. But where they were, there's no way they were going to find that person because they were going to see them first. And so I was wanting the police to come in our neighborhood and just patrol it for real. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brenda. I have no more speaker cards, so we're now at a presentation item. A proclamation recognizing of 38 years of Longview's National Night Out. Members of National Night Out Planning Committee, including Longview's Partners in Prevention, Longview Police Department, and Longview Fire Department. Y'all, please, come on forward.
Come on up.
So a proclamation regarding National Night Out, October 4, 2022. Whereas National Night Out began in 1984 as a unique crime, drug, and violence prevention program with participation in more than 17,000 communities from all 50 states, U.S. territories, and military bases worldwide, we will celebrate it in the City of Longview, Texas, on October 4, 2022. Whereas the 38th Annual National Night Out provides an opportunity for Longview and Greck County citizens to participate in local gatherings and recognize the impact their participation can have reducing crime, drugs, and violence in our community. Police-community partnerships and neighborhood safety cooperation are important themes of National Night Out programs. And so now, therefore, I, Andy Mack, for divestment as Mayor of Longview, proclaim October 4, 2022, as National Night Out in the City of Longview. Okay. You know, this National Night Out, I think if people really recognized how significant it is, they would really recognize how significant it is. Because the more you gather together, the more you know your neighbors, the more you police amongst yourselves, the easier it is for these ladies and gentlemen to do their jobs, and the harder it is for the criminals to do their jobs. And it is their job. You know, that's their, their job is to be a criminal. And so the harder we make their job, the better it is for us. And the easier we make their job, the better it is for them. And by doing these parties and participating together, it makes all of our jobs easier and their job harder. And that's our goal. So Longview, you know, come together, come out, enjoy the National Night Out, get together in neighborhoods because it does make a difference. We've seen it statistically. We've seen it every year. It grows and grows and grows. And so we wanted to continue to do that because you all do a phenomenal job. But you all do a great job as well to get this organized and put it on. And I look forward to it every year. So I'm excited about it, and let's have a great, great National Night Out this year again, once again. Thank y'all so much for all that you do. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank y'all so much. Looking forward to a great evening. Okay, we're now at a public safety update. We'll start with Chief Moon.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. McPhee. You kind of stole some of my thunder there, Mr. Mayor. But no, everything-
Next time, you can read that, okay?
No, you did a much better job than what I would do. Just reiterate again, everything that you said, sir. This is about community relations and having those relations, not just with the police and the fire department, but with your neighbors, actually knowing who your neighbors are, what cars belong there, what cars don't belong there, knowing when your neighbor's on vacation, stuff like that. That's what helps us all out and has a safer neighborhood. And we had our kickoff party last week, and it was a great success. We already have 70 parties signed up. So that's 70 groups getting to know one another. And I'd love to hit 100. So I'm going for the triple numbers there. So please, if you're still thinking about it, sign up, get your neighborhood signed up. Councilman Way, thank you for reading the proclamation last week. I also want to thank again Partners in Prevention, Maude Cobb and their staff for helping us host that. And we had it over at the exhibit building this year, but it still worked out really, really well. And then actually, National Night Out will be October 4. Also, last week, we had three officers that got commissioned. They graduated from Tyler, TJC, on their academy. And we have James Jones on the left, Brendan Gregory in the center, and Dawson Newman that are on the right. So they will actually be starting field training very, very soon. And then we also, on the same day, promoted Eric Cunningham to sergeant. And tonight, after the council meeting, we will have our Citizens Police Academy. It will begin, and we will be given a tour this evening of the building. And then I'll have a few words to tell the group, and that'll go on for several weeks. And we're very excited about having that again with our post-pandemic environment and getting back more to normal. And I'm also proud to say that Monday, we will have a police academy. We'll actually have several other agencies participating in our police academy. But we will have 10 officers, 10 cadets to be officers in that academy as well. And that actually has us down to 18 vacancies. So we're finally out of the 20s and down to 18. So it's still not where we want to be, but it's progress going the right direction. So I'm very proud of that. And that is all I have. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Chief Moon? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Stillman.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council. Mr. McPhee, thank you for the opportunity to update you on some activities of the fire department since our last council meeting. A message like fire prevention, Fire Prevention Week is coming up in October, and it's on the anniversary of the Great Chicago Fire, as most people know. It takes a village to preach the message of fire safety in our community. And we've got a great partner in State Farm. Our local insurance agency, specifically Charlene Ingram and Rob Bassett, they provided some materials and paraphernalia for us to help pass out as we send that message forward. And during pretty much the whole month of October is fire prevention time for us. Even though it's only celebrated a week at the national level, we spend the whole month in the schools, in the community, out really sending that message forward. So we want to thank these partners for giving some resources that we can put out in people's hands to keep them safe. We took some time out yesterday to play our annual 9/11 commemorative golf tournament over in Tyler. This is an opportunity for fire and police to come together. Not a stressful environment unless you're not a very good golfer, and then it's extremely stressful. And just have a little healthy competition against one another and some camaraderie. And I regret to say that I had to congratulate Chief Moon in the police department. They smoked the fire department this year. That's about four or five years in a row. So we're going to have to sharpen up on our golfing skills a little bit. But we had a great time. The facility and the accommodations were great. It was a great opportunity to get everybody together. We had a fabulous time. I also had the opportunity tomorrow to complete an orientation class of our four newest firefighters, and these four firefighters will roll out on to shift work over the coming weekend. Their firefighter EMT, Jose Fuentes, of the Windsboro area, firefighter EMT Sammy Murphy, who comes to us from Baton Rouge, Louisiana, firefighter EMT Peyton Terry, who comes to us from Stonewall, Louisiana, and firefighter EMT Hunter McGoy, who's hometown kid from here in Longview. We look forward to many great things from them. They're helping us close our gap in our vacancies. Once these four roll out on shift, I think we'll still be seven down. We're hiring all the time. So if you're interested, give us a look. And our Stop the Bleed classes are continuing. Our next offering will be Monday at 6 o'clock at the training center. You can go to the website there and get yourself registered. Some great life-saving information that you might put to use to help your family or someone in the community. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Stillman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're now at a consent agenda. Any items council that pull up for separate discussion?
M.
Item M. Anything else, council? Okay, we'll consider item M. Chief Stillman?
Hey, chief.
Yes, sir.
What kind of truck is this? Is it a ladder truck or a pumper?
I'm sorry. Oh, item N, it is an engine. It's actually a rescue-style engine that will go out at Station 5.
Okay. What did we pay for this with?
Budgeted money that's in, it's in next year's budget. What we're asking you to do tonight is to approve the documentation so that we can lock the price in before a 6% price increase that happens next month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Second.
We have a motion of second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're now at an action item. Consider resolution authorizing the director city manager to negotiate a contract with Sand Tech Consulting. Mr. Karen.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and Mr. McPhee. Tonight before you, we are asking to consider a resolution to enter into a contract for Parks Master Plan update. Parks Master Plan provides direction and identifies the priorities residents would like to see within their park system. It's a working document that staff utilizes on a daily basis, pretty much, to organize its work as well as leveraging projects moving forward. As you can see, we have had Park Master Plans nearly every five years. We're a little bit longer on it right now because we had so much that was identified in this last one, and we've been very successful in completing those, and I'll go over that here shortly. One of the reasons why a Parks Master Plan is important for us is because it allows us the opportunity to apply for grants from Texas Parks and Wildlife. We've been very successful in receiving those grants to the tune of over $600,000 from Texas Parks and Wildlife alone through their grant program. As you all know, the 2015 comprehensive plan identified top 27 priorities for the overall community. Of those, five were within the park system. Number two overall was an expanded trail system. I think we all know the successes we've had in developing our trail system over the past couple of years. Completing Lear Park, which has been over 20 years in the making, we're on Phase 5, and the bond issue has allowed for us to complete that, as well as improve our existing parks. The two items that were in the top 27, we did review. However, we have not been able to move forward on those as we didn't feel that those were as high priority as what the other items that have been identified. So within that comprehensive plan was also a list of top 10 priorities for the park system itself over a five-year period. Again, trails was the number one item there. Number two was improve existing parks. We've made significant strides in moving our parks forward with the amenities available within them and improvements overall to those parks. I would imagine this will probably pop up again because I don't think we're ever going to be finished improving our existing parks. Complete the Park Master Plan for Lear, which we've done, and then also the Spring Hill Park Master Plan. This is the second round of the park bond issues, and so we will be having a meeting with the community shortly to unveil what we've come up with and get some feedback on that. The next one is acquiring parkland, new parkland, and increased services. In the past seven years, we have added the green to our park system as well as the arboretum. New facilities, existing parks, again, we have a number of people that have requested restrooms, park benches, and water fountains, and we have included those in not only our renovated parks, but also existing parks. Increased park funding and budget, again, thanks to you all for committing to that and allowing us to the opportunity to serve our residents in a better capacity. Raise funds to the arboretum, again, great opportunity for our community to visit a facility that's outstanding for all of Texas, not just East Texas. And that was done through not only public funding but private funding as well. Exploring new indoor recreation, Broad and Recreation Center will soon be open, the expansion of it. And we're really excited about the opportunities that our community is going to see and what we've been able to do with that facility. And then lastly, explore multiple funding opportunities. And this is one that I do want to really highlight because we have a great community. We all know that. And we have a tremendous number of sources that we've tapped into because we have a Parks Master Plan that has identified these priorities. Lead Co. has contributed to the trail system. They leverage those funds with Tech dot to get a grant from them. We also have great partners from the Veterans Recognition Foundation that's helped us at Teague Park, the skate park, the green was developed in partnership, pickleball courts, and disc golf. So again, we have a number of opportunities whereas we're not only utilizing city funds, but we've leveraged this document to make improvements to our park system. So what we are looking forward to with this update is to establish those goals, really assess the little bit of the conditions. We already know what those are to a certain extent, but we do want to have some comparative analysis throughout the state and the nation. But then really, the biggest component is we want to have that public engagement plan and understand what our community really wants, and then finally develop that action plan. So we requested RFQs back in July. We opened those on August 11. We had a committee of staff review those, and we unanimously decided that one vendor was superior to the others, and that was Stand Tech. We also had the advisory committee review everything as well, and they unanimously supported the moving forward with updating the Parks Master Plan at their meeting on August 22. So a lot of information, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys would have.
Any questions, Mr. Karen?
What was the range of the bids?
It's an RFQ, so their fee is not included. It's based, the evaluation is based solely on their qualifications and their experience.
Well, then how did you come up with $50,000 if they didn't?
Sure, they submitted-
I mean, is this some number that we just hope we can hit?
No, they, we requested a specific scope, and then once we identified the most qualified, then we begin negotiating the actual scope that would meet the budget that we have for that.
And did we check their references?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Shaharos?
I just want to make a comment. Obviously, it's not a secret that I think this type of strategic planning is very important. I know there's some pushback often on just paying for this kind of consulting work. But I think public engagement, especially in the parks, is just so important. Parks is something people do get genuinely excited about, reach out to us all the time about. And I think you can see the return that we've received. I will sidebar for just a second and share my personal experience with the parks plans. I asked Laura Hill many, many years ago about having a dog park. I wanted that in Longview. I was just, you know, a random citizen at the time. And she said, "Well, bad news on our plan," which must have been from 2005, "dog park is very low in what the people, what everybody has publicly engaged and said they want. So you're going to have to figure out how to do that as a private-public partnership." But it was the direction I needed, and it was the right engagement that she knew that overall, that's not what the community wanted to invest time or money into. So if I wanted to do it, I had to come up with another way. And I think just, you can see that, I didn't realize there'd been three plans since I'd been around, but those have all been accomplished, which I think just only highlights how very important it is to have the public engagement, to tell us what we need to focus our time and resources on. And then that's what the public is engaging with and using. And I would also give you a plug. If anybody is interested in getting more involved, the Parks Advisory Committee is the funnest, most wonderful way to do it. Did my first six years on there, and it was really exciting to see what's coming and what people are engaging about, mountain bike trails, skate parks, all the fun things that people actually are excited about.
And it's essential for grants.
Absolutely.
And I'll just point out that, you know, we didn't have the, pickleball is an emerging sport. It was not identified in the Park Master Plan, and neither was the skate park. And so when we, when those folks did approach us, it was the same conversation that we had. Look, we would love to help out. We think those are great amenities for our park system, disc golf being another one as well, sorry. But we should, look, we can, we can probably figure out some funding, but you're going to have to provide the bulk of the work to do that. And so again, our community has stepped forward to partner with us to provide for our community in a great way. And so we appreciate that. And the more information and the input that we have through the engagement process allows for those items to be included. But, but there is flexibility, as you've mentioned, to, for us to move and to pivot to items that our community does want and will invest funds into being able to do.
Mr. Parker, do you have your hand up?
Yes. Speaking of the pickleball courts, have you made any progress on the parking for that area? Are you working with Dwayne and them on that?
Yes, sir. So we've identified a little bit of a temporary fix potentially, as well as reaching out to some of the businesses, as well as, I haven't reached out to the school district quite yet, but looking at some parking arrangements or agreements as well. So, yes, sir.
How is, you know, chief, how is that with the road conditions over there? Are we still having problems with that?
There, I mean, there could be potential problems parking on the curb, something like that. We kind of, we'll talk to Public Works.
Yeah. Well, and that's what we did is, so we do recognize that there are some challenges with parking. And as I always say, that's sometimes a good problem to have because that means people are utilizing our parks. And we do realize it does impact those trying to use it, as well as the residents that are around there. But it also means people are in our parks, and that's what we all want. So, but we did work with Public Works because safety is our number one item. And so we want to make sure the traveling public, whether that's pedestrian or in a vehicle, has the ability to make safe turns. And so we do have some no parking signs in particular areas that allow for safe travel of those vehicles. And again, the police department does a great job of patrolling and working with groups and residents that are hosting events or out there. So, you know, I think we all know that our police department is very proactive on approaching folks and working with them to make sure that, that we focus on the things that we need to focus on and not on those that are trying to enjoy our park system.
So what was the temporary fix that you've come up with so far?
We're looking at extending the parking lot potentially, what the costs are on that, as well as working with others on, that are in the area, that we may be able to utilize the existing parking there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You know, we should be very proud of our parks in Longview. We have a great park system. It is wonderful for quality of life for our citizens, but it's even a bigger benefit for those that are looking to come to Longview and bring a business to Longview. And I'm sure Mr. Mansfield, who's here from Lead Co., will attest to that, that the parks are a huge draw for people looking to relocate or to move and live. And so I think the parks are essential to a community, as are many parts of the community. But Laurie, do you remember- But Laurie, do you remember back in the late 90s, that first little pitch we had at Longview High School Auditorium for Lear Park? People thought we were crazy. They thought we were crazy. Huh? I do too. They thought we were crazy, but you know, that's where we, we've come a long way. We want to, that's, that stepping stones are always great. Let's keep climbing those steps and, and continue to improve our parks because that's a defining part of a community is how, how you, how you provide quality of life for your citizens. So thank you for Scott and Mr. Carpenter, you got another question?
Scott, I don't want to put you on the spot, but you got any idea where you're going to create the next 20 pickleball courts?
Well, I don't know that I have identified an exact location.
All I can tell you is you better get on it. I've never seen anything like-
Great problems to have.
I was gonna say, exactly. And, and I like one thing I just wanted to mention, I, I love that our community has high expectations from us for our park system and they continually are asking us to raise the bar. That's a good, again, that's a good problem to have. That means people are invested in our community and they're invested, invested in our park system and they want more and better out of it. And, and our job is to figure out ways to be able to do that. And that's, that's what we want to do.
Keep it up, you're doing a great job. Is there a motion? We have a motion, second. Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Now I consider a resolution adopting the five-year CIP program. Mr. Bradley.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor Mack, City Council, Mr. McPhee. I'll be presenting tonight's CIP program for next year, asking you to recommend to pass a resolution for the funding and setup of our next year's CIP. These are based on policies that were adopted by the city council over 20 years ago. They're based on that master park plan that he just talked about as well as other plans. We have water sewer, streets, drainage, comprehensive plan. And these projects are ranked against each other. You know, we, staff gets together and discusses them and ranks them on urgencies and priorities and comes up with this list that you see before you. This was last year's that you approved. Most of these are in design or getting close to start construction. You know, real good project that we got on there is that fifth one, MODCOB Activity, Activity Center Drainage Improvement that was done both with ARPA as well as the Sabine River Authority. So we're able to have start construction on that. But a lot of those are still in design and getting close to construction. So this year's begin with the drainage. We have a house flooding problem on 402 Mary Ellen. This is a place that's had repetitive flooding. It's done in accordance with our master drainage plan. It's also street improvements that Mary Ellen also floods. It's got roadside ditches, so it will improve both the, the situation for the house flooding as well as the street. It's approximately $250,000. It's, you know, in order to make things work, we're using not only drainage CIP funds, but we're also utilizing a portion of the operation and maintenance funds to help get that done. Our other drainage project, Lake LaMond Dam and spillway improvements. As you recall, probably about two years ago, we came and asked for the permission to apply for a grant. It's Hazard Mitigation Grant with FEMA. It's administered by Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. You approved that. This is still on the books. It still needs to be done. As it's noted in the, the CIP list, you know, the lake owner is now willing and stepping up to help fund the difference between what the grant will be. And actually they're in discussions with TCQ at this moment in terms of the grant approval and they'll be responsible for making up the difference on the, you know, whatever comes up short on the grant. So we're committed to the 702,000. Our traffic project this year is based on a warrant study for a signal at McCann in Magnolia, $350,000. We hope this will be a little bit less, but you know, you can't tell with the current price of things. We did have a good result on our birdsong signal, which was at Eastman, but this has been budgeted by the general fund. It'll come out of the general fund. We're proposing $900,000 for water improvements. This is our annual project for line upgrades. Usually these are areas that the lines are undersized or there's not enough capacity or they're deteriorated. We just kind of focused on one neighborhood finally, as well as Peterson Place, but you'll see that one area right there around Castle, Rodden, Everett and Christopher focusing on trying to do an area that's, it's just an older part of the city that needs improvements as well as Peterson Place. Also utilizing CDBG funds for Eva Circle. It's roughly about 80% is CDBG. The rest will be the CIP utility fund, but doing some street improvements that we typically do these every year, do street improvements, water, sewer and drainage. Our wastewater improvement systems, same location as the water, Everett, Rodden, Castle and Christopher and Peterson Place, $900,000 and it's funded by the utility CIPs. There's the summary list, approximately 3.35 million. And I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any question, Mr. Bradley? Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir.
Is the $460,000 for the cupboard replacement over on Avenue B, that's included in the last year's? Is that-
Yes, sir.
That's up for this coming year?
That should happen at, once Fairmont gets open-
Okay.
Because we'll need to close that up.
Close one off and leave the other off.
That should have been on that list if, if you didn't notice it.
Yeah, I saw it on there. I, I just was wondering if that was what we were waiting on is, is for Fairmont to get closed off.
We were wanting to kind of phase it in there because we feel the need that we need to close that and there's enough traffic issues.
The house over on 2023 that we talked about a minute ago, is that a demo? Or what, what are you planning on doing?
We're going to do, uh, street improvements as well as drainage improvements.
Okay. So it's not a demo on the structure then?
No, it won't be a demo.
Any other question, Mr. Bradley? Mr. Carpenter?
This is a Roland and a you question. In 2122, we budgeted 11.7 CIP and we're only coming back with about three, what was it?
3.34.
So if it's a five-year roll, are we gonna need to come back to 11 next year? How does that, explain how that works? It's a five-year roll, correct? You guys identified what we have out for five years?
We, we, we fund the first year is every year. And so a lot of times the projects due to their priority or urgency, like the George Ritchie Road water lines and sewer lines, that's the largest project that was on the, the plans from last year. That was due to the TechStot widening of George Ritchie Road that they delayed and we paused. And then last year they said it's back on. So that's why the big funding increase there. The additional funding this year has gone to cover some of the increased costs, obviously.
Well, my concern was is that we're not, is that we're not passing eight million?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Sir? We have a motion, there's a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Bradley. Thank you. Now I consider a resolution adopting the Long Economic Development Corporation budget. Mr. Mansfield, welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mr. Roland. Appreciate the opportunity to be before y'all this evening. You know, historically, Mayor, I think you've given me eight minutes.
Yes, historically. I'm getting older.
And, and me, me too. And I understand I have five minutes and the gavel has gotten louder.
We're getting better.
So we'll move through this quickly. Really excited this year. We've had a lot of great projects. I'll go through some of them, but what we're anticipating for the upcoming year. Just a, a general year in review, we generated over 40, or 41 proposals. We're actually working more than that. Some more projects have come in recently. Compare this last year with 17. Our activity has increased greatly. I think Mayor, it may have been you or Judge Stout said in a meeting one time that the secret is out. Longview people are wanting to come to Longview to invest their money. Site visits four, 37 new projects with potential of over 8,000 jobs. You know, if we can just get one or two of these projects, that's certainly success. And with a potential capital investment of over $4 billion. When I first, the first year I came here, it was like 100 and something million. So those are the potential projects that we're looking at. These are some of the projects in the last six years that we've been successful, both new additions and building expansions. The big number I want to show you is $62 million. That's net benefit to the city over between 10 and 25 years because some of our projects like Dollar General and Gap over a 25-year period. That, that's a big, a big significant number. So what it shows is the, the sales tax money is put, being put to work to bring these industries here. The type B projects, as you know, in 94, 96, the voters gave Lead Co. the ability to invest in type B projects. These are the big projects that we've invested in. Scott mentioned earlier, the trails, George Ritchie was a, a significant project that the city and county and TechStot participated with. The McCann George Ritchie Signal, we did contribute to as well. And then the land for the fire station, which I was teasing Chief Stillen about earlier this evening, when was it going to begin? And then the police fire training academy in the Longview Business Park. And we'll continue and Roland and I have had some discussions and discussions with our board too on future type B projects that we can help and assist the city with to improve those amenities. Trails funding, this is just a breakdown over the past few years. You'll see in, for the upcoming year, we have a remainder of a little over $88,000 and then our funding will be complete for the trail system. And we're excited about that. So we get into the budget, you see a significant increase in our revenue. And of course, point out, these revenue projections come from Angela's office and we're really grateful for that. And talking with our accountant who's done our books since day one, this is the largest revenue amount that Lead Co. has witnessed. Our revenue interest fund, of course, the, the interest rates, although it gone up when, when this budget was created, it was 0.35%. So we keep that number very conservative, even though that interest income, it's not much. We keep it conservative, but we do show a number there. So what are we going to do with the 7.7 million? In our industry project, you'll see we're proposing the increase. The Lead Co. board did approve this budget unanimously to 400,000. Retail will still, still stay the same. The talent, that's primarily paying for the Work Keys Assessment exams. We are getting, we were the very first community in the state of Texas to become work-ready certified. And Eastman is a large user of the Work Keys Assessment. They actually require it for their employees, but now we're getting more companies engaged and wanting to use that, that assessment. In the projects, you'll see 300,000. That's for the transit system. In the past two years, we did not contribute. The city did not request it because I think the ARPA funds paid for that, but now coming back, which we are happy to participate with because that does provide an avenue for people to get to work or to services. GNA and our personnel and benefits, the increase there, we did follow just the city's rule on this, 4% plus 500 for the employees, not including me. I am, I'm not included in that amount. I did budget for one new position. As you can see from the first slide, with 40 new projects, more coming onboard, the workload is getting pretty extensive. Office expenses, that represents a 3.5% inflation increase. The insurance stays the same. Professional services, that includes our legal and accounting. We did budget 100,000 for strategic plan. You know, COVID changed everything for everybody and our data is certainly outdated. You know, we need to review what our occupation codes are, how people are working, how they're getting to work. Our target industry still the same? Do we need to shift money and, and focus on a different type of target industry and, and not waste it on this one? And it's always good to have an unbiased third-party entity to review that and develop that level of strategy for us. Our business park maintenance, again, a 3.5% increase due to inflation. Our debt service, that's the bond payments for the trail system. Non-fixed assets, 300, we did increase that. Generally, we kept that low. We buy a couple of computers a year, but 300,000, we did include to outfit our new office that's under construction, which include a big part of that is our IT, which will be severely updated. In fact, our server went down over this past weekend. As our IT consultant says, it came over with the Mayflower. But I've held off on replacing it since we're moving into our new office at some point here in the next few months. Real property site plan, that's a fund we use when we update our phase one environmental studies on our parks we have to do every two years or if we develop site plans for a particular consultant that's coming in. Our scheduled incentive payments right now are total 475,000. I think we had one or two that dropped off this year that completed the terms of their performance agreement. Our manufacturing academy payments have ceased. We've met our commitment there. So we'll have, excuse me, a total of 3.4 million for new economic development projects for the year. And that's two, that's what, a million more than we had last year. So you show, we'll see a fund balance there of 14.6 million. And in our capital budget, we had a revenue sharing project, this is for the benefit of the new council members, in which we partnered with Conteras now. They provided fiber optic to our Longview Business Park and out to the airport some years ago and to the North Business Park. We contributed funds for that and they reimbursed us as customers came onboard. Those agreements have long expired. There's no interest income in there. We've expired our bond funds for the trails and you'll see the 88,000 that we have budgeted. The number came from Dwayne's office. We have spent, the George Ritchie Signal we paid for last year, the new office headquarters, as of the end of June, we have spent 100,000. So I did remove that amount from the 2 million that was originally approved. And 300,000, 350,000 for any new capital projects, whether it's moving dirt, removing trees, whatever the board, and these, these projects here in the capital budget have to be approved by the board. So we're not transferring any money in or out of the capital budget. And that's all I have.
Any question, Mr. Mansfield?
I've got several, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Wayne, since our last large announcement, when was our last large announcement on inbound jobs?
Uh, that would have been, the last announcement would have been of Viagen and then prior to that would have been Gap.
And there's always some in the hopper.
Yes, sir.
Okay. One thing that, that I was noticing when I looked back through this and, and tried to do it, I had asked you and Mr. Shirley and I think Jim Finley was in on it. We've got a situation in District One whereby we moved a great employer from District One over to District Three. And we abandoned a plant, literally, they did. And I have asked on three occasions for the Crosby plant to get cleaned up, for it to get secured and for the trash to get picked up. And I was told that Michael and you and somebody else had some contacts and they told we'll take care of it. There's holes in the roof, there's gutters falling off the building. They just moved out and left us out to dry. I want to see something done on the west side. I understand the part that all of the Lead Co. money comes from all six districts and it's for the good of the whole city. We've got two districts that benefit specifically and I want to see something done to get that mess cleaned up on the west side and to get some people on the west side and the can plant and the brewery, I mean, in the warehouses, in the old Crosby building, if we level it, clean it up, do something. The old refinery is still sitting there and, you know, Wayne, I just need some, I need some attention over there.
Yeah, and, and I'll be happy to address that. One, on the old Crosby facility, that was prior to me coming to Longview. It's my understanding from the history that the plant had become outdated and they were either moving to Arkansas or we could facilitate them to stay here in Longview. So the decision was made to put them in an existing building in the Longview Business Park and keep 500 jobs here in Longview and not have them move out of state. The current condition of the property, I have talked to the VP with Crosby and he has assured me they've been working out there. Now I have not been by the site in some time, so I can't answer whether they have or not. I can follow back up with him and be happy to do- I can follow back up with him and be happy to do that. Secondly, on the cannery, there, that is occupied now. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Dollar General has leased the space for some period of time for extra storage. How many employees they have there, I'm not sure.
Well, they were cleaning it up last time we talked. I didn't know what it was.
The, the, the old brewery has been acquired by a company called Phoenix. They have actually been making improvements. We've had a couple of companies look at acquiring or leasing some property there, but they are unwilling to work with them, from what I understand and from what I've heard from these companies. And then thirdly, you know, looking at, and I've had this conversation before in your district, you know, find us some land. I mean, I hate to put it bluntly, but we, we have about 150 acres left in the North Business Park and very little in the Long, I mean, we need land. We are very land poor, and we're more than happy, we don't look at districts. We look at Longview and Greck County. And if we have properties available, whatever district it's in, we're going to consider it, especially an available building. If I've got a 50,000 or 60,000 square, we had an RFI come in this evening looking for 50,000 square feet. I don't have it. No one has it. So if you have some opportunities identified, we're more than willing to take a look at it.
Right. On the new building we put in last year, and I understand where we're going, are we confident that we're going to get in for 2 million or less?
Yes, sir.
Based on what we changed and?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, when is the anticipated move?
February to March is what I'm hearing.
Of '23?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did we, or did, would we not see a credit to your financial for your current rent? Aren't you paying a rent?
Yes, sir, but you, yes, we are, but you, we're also, we're not paying utilities. So really, in my estimation of the utilities that we will be taking on, such as water and electricity?
Yes, sir.
It's probably about a wash.
Okay, well, just, I, I knew the timeframe was close, so, anyway, that, that was, thank you, Mayor, that was my couple of little points that I really wanted to discuss.
Any other questions, Mr. Mansfield? Mr. Pirtle?
I have a quick one, Steve, if you don't mind.
Oh, go ahead.
Good evening, Wayne, everyone. Of the 37 new projects that, potential projects, how many of them are in South Longview, or do we have any that are?
Well, actually, we're, we're working on two right now that we may be announcing here soon, and both of those are in the Longview Business Park. We're hoping that, in fact, we met with one company today, and it's looking very favorable. And it will be a large employer.
Ra ra.
In fact, in fact, if you look at that, the majority of the projects that we've had are in South Longview. The Kamatsu Expansion, the Aionic Coal Expansion.
I guess I'm more interested in new development. I know Kamatsu has been, been there, and I saw them on.
Again, you know, it's a problem of land.
Right.
And where do we have available land? You know, finding even 10 acres or 20 acres is very difficult.
So has there been any consideration for out in the Lakeport area that?
Now, we, we have looked at some areas there, but we do have some floodplain and floodway issues in certain portions where there is available land. At one time, we did look at the property there, south of the Walmart, south of the railroad tracks. But after an analysis of that, the cost of bringing it out of the floodplain was very cost prohibitive.
It's unfortunate, because that was a good piece of property with a rail right next to it, and it just didn't work out.
Yeah, the call, at that time, and of course, this is before COVID and everything else, the cost of developing that was well over $10 million, plus the acquisition.
Mr. Pirtle?
What is the annual renting cost for rental on, at the Chamber right now?
We pay around $3,800, a little over $3,800 a month, I believe.
So you're projecting that your utility costs at the new building are going to be $3,800 a month?
Roughly in that area.
How many people are working there?
In?
How many people do you have hired right now working?
There are six of us total.
How, how many square feet is the new building?
5,000 square feet.
Okay. I saw on your, your list here, the 300,000. What all is that going to include?
300,000 for?
Yeah, on your office FF and E's.
The majority of that will include the IT portion, as well as the new furniture for the bill, to furnish it.
Didn't you just purchase a couple of years ago, new furniture for your office down there?
No, sir. Maybe a chair here or two.
Last four or five years?
No, sir.
Okay.
I think I purchased a chair for one of our employees, but that's it.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mr. Mansfield?
One last one, I know we're trying to get you to another meeting. Is it within the parameters of EDC to be able to offer to our existing employers training and, and, you know, additional incentives to help them advance on the workforce side?
Yes, sir.
That's allowable?
Yes, sir. It is. In fact, there are some programs administered through, through TWC. It's called Job Skills Fund, and we work, in fact, over the years, STEMCO has received that, Kamatsu has received that, I believe, Aion has received that, maybe, if I'm not mistaken. So yeah, we work with Kilgore College on that because they write the grant application to the state, and then the money is dispersed through them, and they hire the trainer, and the money is reimbursed back.
Recipitate the trainer, and then that gives you the ability to go to the employer, potential employer, or existing employer. It's okay, here's what we can do.
Exactly.
That's great. Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mansfield, I just want to thank you and your board for what an exemplary job you all do. You all, year in and year out, provide us with excellent opportunity and development of our community. Your, your job production over the last number of years is far exceeded anything we've ever experienced in Longview over the last 10 years, exponentially. So I just want to thank you and your board. Y'all work hard, you keep your nose to this, to the floor, and you grind it out hard every day. So I really appreciate what you do and the job that you all, all do. So please thank your board for us as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. We do have a great team.
If there's no other questions, is there a motion?
I need to approve.
Second? Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
For now, out of the community interest, Mr. Carpenter?
Thank you. Continuing Food Bank at Greckton, first and third Thursdays. We also have the city-sponsored food bank this Friday, September the 9th, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. Please make your way there. Homecoming Pine Tree, the oldest, second oldest school in Texas. Friday, September the 16th, will be honoring two alumni, Preston Abbott, the school class of 1980, Lori Ball, the class of 1965, on Friday, September the 16th. And on 2022 Fall Fest will be at the stadium. On Saturday, October the 29th, from 3:00 till 6:00, a good time will be had by all. And I have it on pretty good authority that there'll be a pretty good group of people from the Pine Tree School District that will be cooking for the National Night Out.
Excellent. Ms. Snoddy?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
Mr. Wayne?
I have a couple of things. Once again, Longview ISD is partnering with the Chamber and the Boys and Girls Club for the Raising Highly Capable Kids Program, kicking off September 20th. For more information, email ask@lisd.org or contact the Chamber of Commerce. And last, Lobos head coach, Coach John King, will have a chance at earning his 200th career win this Friday night, Tyler. It's a huge feat. Coach King is one of the winningest active coaches in the state of Texas, and we wish him and our Longview Lobos a win and safe travels Friday night. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ishihara?
Yes. I would like to invite everyone to join me at my town hall meeting. It is next Tuesday, September 13th, starts at 6:00 p.m., located at Motion Church. Address is 110 Triple Creek Circle, and that is right next to Passato's. Hope you will make it out to join me. And then I have one more, the East Loop 281 Corridor Study. That is going to be the second public meeting, so we had a public meeting a few months ago, gathered feedback, and this will be the second time for them to come back. So if you are in that area, please do come out and give your feedback. It's very important. This is the time to do it, and make sure that your opinion is heard. So that meeting is Tuesday, September 27th at 6:00 p.m. at the East Texas Builders Association over there on Alpine Road. That's it.
Ms. Cambola?
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things. We do have a district, or we will be having a meeting for the Spring Hill Park improvements, so please stay tuned to the Facebook pages and the city's page for that. Location and time to be determined, as well as a town meeting coming up for our district, so please be paying attention to social media for that. This year, the Greater Longview United Way celebrates its 75th anniversary of helping families in East Texas. The celebration will be held on September 13th from 11:30 to 1:00 at the Infinity Event Center, located at 300 Tuttle Circle. So we look forward to seeing everybody there. The theme is Past, Present, Future. We are united. And in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month kicking off, which is September 15th to October 15th, I would like to wish a congratulations to the second-ever Miss Longview Latina. Fun fact, I was the first one last year. But Fran Zeli Lopez, way to go, getting top 10. I did not get top 10. And she won the best heritage outfit, so congratulations. Thank you for making East Texas proud and for competing. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Pirtle?
The Arboretum's got their concert series going on tonight, and everybody needs to go to it.
Mr. McPhee?
Well, Downtown Live, Longview's free concert series kicks off this weekend with Concerts at Heritage Plaza on Friday, September 9th, and Saturday, September 10th. Join us every Friday night through October. The full schedule and more information is available at longviewtexas.gov/dtl. As we said before, National Night Out will be held on Tuesday, October 4th, with parties across Longview. Register your party now at longviewtexas.gov/NNO. Art Walk, so mark your calendars for the next Art Walk in downtown Longview. That will be held on Thursday, October the 6th.